All right, this meeting is convened in accordance with amendments to the New York State Open Meetings Law, which permits virtual meetings without an in-person component to the meeting. The meeting is being recorded. Members of the board can be seen and heard, and a video and transcript of the meeting will be available at a later date. There is a, yep, let's see, there is a quorum present. So I'll turn it back over to Bob to start the meeting.
Okay, very good. And by the way, a very quick thing before we get into it, just so that everyone knows, Sabrina brought us up to date before not everyone was here. We will be meeting virtually via Zoom through the first meeting in June. But sometime around that time, the latest order will expire by then, but also by then, there will be some guidelines in terms of what we could do in terms of hybrid meetings. So that'll be good to have some, you know, some guidance rather than just trying to figure it out on our own. So we'll be meeting this way through the first meeting in June, at least at this point. Okay, we'll bring up our first matter. This is the public hearing on Balco. Sixth Conti Lane, this is an application for a site development plan approval subdivision amendment CGLL, steep slopes, tree removal, stormwater management, and erosion and sedimentation control permits. So we last heard this on March 15. So this is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, Alan, we'll turn it over to you for any updates in terms of what we looked at last time. If there are none, there's no big deal, but I know you've got, I think you had something more to mention.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. There really aren't any, I'll say, significant updates from the prior submission that we made. There were just some clarifications that were made. I believe that was really all that was done. If you want, since this is a public hearing, I could just briefly go through a description of what the project is.
Please, if you would, that would be very helpful.
For any of the public that's here. If you'd like, I could try to share screen. Hopefully that is visible.
Yep.
Okay, I'll just say this property is is sixty-five thousand nine hundred eleven square feet, one point five one three acres in size, located at the northerly end of Conti Lane. Property's access from the cul-de-sac at the end of the street. It is in the Oliver Pond basin watershed, which is charged to the Hudson River. So therefore, it's outside the New York City water supply watershed. The lot's currently vacant. There is an existing state and town regulated wetland, which lies off the property, kind of like to the northwest of the property. It's identified by the state as freshwater wetland oh seven. There are no regulated wetlands on the property. The hundred-foot wetland buffer extends into, I'll call it the western, if you will, portion of the property, a little fringe. That's, that's what's there. It encompasses approximately thirteen thousand square feet of the lot. I'll just say the wetland was redelineated on April 4th, 2021. Flags were surveyed by the project land surveyor, and the boundary has been verified by DEC. What's being proposed is construction of a four-bedroom house. The access will be from a new driveway, constructed off Conti Lane. Potable water will be obtained from the existing water main in Conti Lane. Waste water disposed of in a new septic system to be constructed on the lot. I will say all proposed construction lies outside of the hundred-foot town and state wetland buffer. And I'll just say also the building, the coverage calculations worksheet that we had submitted does show that the building coverage is less than what is permitted, and development coverage, seven thousand square feet, is less than ten thousand nine hundred seventy-seven square feet that's permitted. Floor area ratio also is less than what is permitted. There are no variants requested. The site being, I'll also mention that the site being wooded will result in some tree removals. Those are shown, kind of like highlighted on this figure. So there are a number of trees, about sixty-nine trees, that'll actually be removed from this property. But the plan will also install forty-eight new trees and a hundred and seventy-one new shrubs. And I'll just lastly say as well, there's a stormwater management plan for the property, which runoff from the house and driveway will be conveyed into a subsurface infiltration facility, which will provide water quantity and water quality management. And I'll also say finally, that there is a, an existing rock pile, as you may, many know, on this lot. Some of the rock will be used to create new stone walls on this property, and the remainder will be hauled off. And that's basically what this project is. You know, it's construction of a four-bedroom house on the last lot of the Conti Lane subdivision, and the, its connection to the utilities that are present. With that, I'll open it up to the board.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Sabrina, do you want to run through your comments?
Sure, I have really no new comments. I think that, you know, again, this plan is zoning compliant, so there's no concerns with how it fits on the lot or sits on the lots from a planning perspective. One of the things that we do need to clarify is, is the clearing and grading limit line. You know, this, this representation on the lot is asking for changes to the clearing and grading limit line, which are different from the previously approved plan and the existing clearing and grading limit line. And so the planning board really needs to determine whether or not they are okay with that, and whether or not that makes sense, because that really sets forth the, the project in the sense of moving it forward and coming to resolution. So that's really the only comment that I have to, you know, to make sure to bring it to your attention as a board, so you can discuss it.
Right, okay, good, thank you. Bob, you had some comments?
Bob, you're muted. You're mute, Bob.
Thank you, Sabrina. Yeah, sorry about that, guys. Yes, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Basically, I have some general comments that are still remaining, just so everyone knows. I have no objection with these being incorporated into the planning board's conditions, but I'll go through them quickly nonetheless. GC1, as everyone knows, there's an enormous amount of rock there, fifteen hundred sixty cubic yards. Do a quick calculation, track, let's take about fifteen yards, that's about a hundred and four trucks each way. Highly recommend that they submit an MPT plan to make certain there's ample warning signs along Somers Town Road, which is a state road, to make certain people aware of the trucks coming in and out of that road. GC2 is, obviously, they have to obtain or street the permit from the state regarding that. And as Sabrina said before, the applicant is proposing to amend the clearing and grading limit line. I think he shows like a breakdown and a genesis and a whole analysis on C106. Alan, you might want to share that, so he can get a good idea of what it is. Obviously, if that's the case, and the planning board doesn't approve it, obviously, they have to submit a declaration to Jennifer and amended the clearing and grading limit line map, which I'll review as well, which is incorporated into it as an attachment. GC4 is really a clarification point. I think there's sometimes confusion between what's called the limits of disturbance, which to me, in my mind, is actually a construction disturbance limit, which I use to figure out whether it needs any type of DEC permit. So really, the clearing, amended clearing and grading limit should be specifically labeled differently, demarcated differently. Then the construction limits, which basically are two separate items. That's what I try to portray in GC5. And then GC6, basically, the versatile lot segmental retaining walls, again, is a generic retaining wall section. Obviously, you'll have to retain the services of a structural engineer to come up with complete plans on that, and that would be required prior to a BP, which is always the case all the time. And GC7, evidently, Alan, you can maybe chime in this a little bit. The proposed primary subsurface treatment system is a gravity system. However, the proposed expansion is a pump system, therefore, provide the plans as approved by the Westchester County Department of Health. And Alan, you might want to speak about the new rules and regulations with the county as well. And those are my comments for tonight, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Alan, can you tell us a little about the septic system and Bob's comment? More questions?
On April 1st, the Westchester County Department of Health issued new regulations, sort of clarifying a lot of what they had previously in their records and their rules and regulations, which dated back, oh, some twenty years. And what it does is actually permits some, actually, what it does is allow, it clarifies, first of all, the amount of flow per, per bedroom in determining the amount of wastewater that has to be disposed of. Previously, it was two hundred gallons per bedroom. And now it's for, you know, post, for modern fixtures, it's a hundred and ten gallons per fixture. So that's a major change. It also permits spacing of leaching trenches at six feet rather than seven feet. And also, the, the length of leaching trenches has been modified as well to conform to the New York State Department of Health standards. So a lot of septic systems designed under the current regulations, the ones that have just been enacted as of April 1st, so nineteen days ago, can actually be smaller. You know, because separation of the trenches is less, the, the amount of flow per bedroom is, is less. So it might actually end up shrinking a little bit. That's what I'll say about it. So it is something that we're, we're in the process of working on.
So would you be subject to the new regulation with this application?
I believe we will, you know, that we will be. And I, you know, because I believe the prior application, which was, I guess, from 2006, has quite expired. So that's my understanding.
So would that give us the opportunity to shrink the septic area that's being designated now? And would it have any impact on the need for building out the expansion area at this point, or clearing the expansion area at this point?
I don't have a calculation to that effect, so I'd be reluctant to say that, and I'd be also reluctant. I understand your concern about that, but my concern would be that in the event, for example, we were to shrink it and for, and, and a, and it was on the plan that way, you know, and filed with the county clerk's office, that if there were to be a problem in, for example, you know, fifteen years from now, if there was a failure of a septic system, to have to go to the planning board in addition to just getting the repair done would be a lengthy process. But I mean, what I would certainly do is compact it to the maximum extent I can and minimize tree removals. I mean, that's what I would do normally. Because I, you know, again, there's, there are to be no trees within ten feet of the septic system, period. And that's, that has not changed. So any trees that are within the footprint of it have to be removed. That's a requirement.
Does the fact that, that Bob has observed that there would have to be a pump system for the expansion area, does that make it more or less likely that the county will require you to clear that area now?
I don't think it has any impact at all, and because they're quite separate in areas of the property, I really believe that it would be, it would not be necessary to clear it at the present time. Can ask for a, a no-clear waiver on that. I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Well, I had a question on the, as Bob raised, I think Sabrina raised. I wasn't sure, the clearing and grading limit line, is that the same as the limit of disturbance line? Because it seems like the limit of disturbance line on, on C101 and maybe 106 seems to be all the way out to the property line in some areas, and yet the clearing and grading limit line, I think, is, is less. So could you explain that, especially in, in this southern part, yeah, that, that that net still of the property, since it wraps over another?
Yeah, let me just show that again here, so you can see it. This was the area that was, I'll say, for the hundred percent expansion area, that was in the 2006 plans. And this is the primary area here. This, I, I have not differentiated, you know, this, this line, which is kind of like that, you know, orange line, if you will, that is the clearing and grading limit line. I've not differentiated that between, I'll call it, a current construction line and the clearing and grading limit line. Now, I've had discussions with Mr. Seoli regarding this, about trying to show some differentiation between it. It is sometimes a little confusing to perhaps people like me that there, you know, there can, I mean, I recognize the fact that the clearing and grading limit line could be very different from a construction limit line. But on this plan, there is no differentiation between.
This was also my question to Sabrina, is could you explain what substantial, like, what is the change that you see from previously? And I'm also confused as to why they should be different. I'm so sorry, somebody has their mic on, and there's a lot of typing disturbance, sorry. Sabrina, can you help?
Can I? Yeah. Um, it's, it's actually, I think Alan might be better, and be better to demonstrate to you using the map. It's just, they, they are, Alan, can you go back to the map that Bob had you go to?
Yeah, Sabrina, can I say, so can I say something here, if you don't mind?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I mean, I think, can I, just for, just for clarification, I, in my way of thinking, as an engineer, you have two lines. The, the clearing and grading limit line is always the line that allows the homeowner to go to the maximum extent practical to clear the lot based on what the planning board approves on a plan based on any type of environmental reasons, existing tree reasons, whatever. The, the construction limit line, to me, as an engineer, is something that's going to be disturbed during construction that will only be affected and, and shown as where it limits of the grading is to do any new grading for the lot. They're necessarily, they're not the same thing. And the limits of disturbance or construction limit lines I use to see how much land disturbance activity there would be during a construction to figure out if it needs a New York State DEC permit for erosion and sedimentation control. So they're really two separate things, and they should be, they should be demarcated very differently on the plan. And really, the construction limit lines is more of an engineering-related item, but the clearing and grading limit line is more something that the planning board has oversight on, and they determine the extent of that. So that's the best I can explain that.
I have just one, I guess I have another, an additional question is, so typically, the construction limit line should be less than, or like a subset of the clearing and grading limit line.
That is correct.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I would agree, that, that is correct. The idea being, I, I think that, the way I would look at it too, is the clearing and grading limit line is that portion of the site which is managed, if you will, by the homeowner. You know, like in a context like this, for example, landscape, you know, as an example. But there's no real land grading activity that's occurring there. You know, because specifically for the notice of intent, whether you have to file one, it really asks for, what is the land disturbance? And the question becomes whether or not an area that's managed, for example, for mowing, is actually land disturbance when there's no grading, there's no grade change. So I think that's probably what the differentiation. Does that sound right, Bob?
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
But I think, Mr. Chairman, that's kind of like how we're sort of differentiating it. As I said here, I have not differentiated. By the way, this plan, what's shown here, is sort of like that red stipple, shows actually the clearing and grading limit line, that is the filed map line from the original approval on this back in nineteen ninety-three. And this green line here is actually the hundred-foot buffer line that was approved from that plan. And I, as I said before, the, what would also happen too, in looking at the original plans, which the, you know, Mr. Seoli was very, I'm very grateful he was able to provide to me. It appeared that, that the wetland boundary back in nineteen ninety-three really wasn't delineated, and that this line is based on a contour line. You know, I think it was like the, it was based on a contour line, not actual flagging. So it's kind of appeared to me to be somewhat arbitrary. So at any rate, this red area shows what was here in nineteen ninety-three. The green area is what's being requested. But as you can see, this is the wetland buffer line here, the current one, based on the most recent delineation in 2021. And there is no disturbance being proposed within that wetland buffer line. Whereas even in this plan, the nineteen ninety-three line, there was disturbance within it, let alone the fact there was a big pile of rock, which also exceeded the old clearing and grading limit line. And that rock, of course, should have been removed, but so be it, it wasn't.
Right, right. And so in the original nineteen ninety-three plan, your septic was out there on that southern wing of the property?
Correct, that's where it was shown in the ninety-three plan. The reason it obviously wasn't here on this plan is that was considered to be in the wetland buffer.
Right, right.
Here in this plan, where we're proposing it, just as it was in 2006, it's actually outside the wetland buffer.
Is there any way that the expansion area could be closer to your primary area? Again, moving that clearing, grading, and limit of disturbance line, you know, further away from that, outside of that peninsula? I'm not using the right name or label, but you know, that area in the south. I, I personally, I just have a concern when there's anything like this that wraps around another neighbor's home, and having the potential for clearing in this area, I think it's an impact to the neighbor that we'd like to avoid. If it's unavoidable, that's, that's another issue.
Yeah, I'm somewhat, I'm, I'm very, I, I think that area still will end up needing to be used. You know, I understand what you're, what you're getting at. But I, you know, I, I think without sort of relooking at how it would be laid out at this time. I mean, we're showing, the plans do show where the septic was in oh-six and how it was approved, and that's what we're using on this plan. So I, I'd be still reluctant to, to sort of eliminate that. I get, I understand what you're getting at. There is quite a, you know, a large rock outcrop here as well, so it actually is pretty low here compared to what's there. There is quite a descent in grade as you get down there. So I don't think it's quite as, you know, visible, I get that. And looking back at it, sorry, Bob. This house was actually I'm just trying to show you on this drawing here. It's on this one here. This is where this house is located, and that's a hundred and twenty-three feet. So it's probably about, this expansion area here is probably about a hundred and fifty feet away. There's quite an intervening distance.
Understood.
From where this house is.
Still, it's, you know, something we'd like to avoid if we can. So I guess the, the issue, obviously, you'll, you'll go for your waiver from the county. Obviously, you want to build it out now anyway. I guess we would, what would we do in this case, Sabrina and Jen? We would have, what, a conditional clearing and grading limit line? One that could be impacted without their coming back to us, if necessary?
Yeah, I would think that you would want to note that the, the expansion area, you know, in the event the expansion area needs to be used, that can be cleared without them coming back to the planning board for additional approval to clear that area.
Right.
That's a good idea. Put a note right on the plan and right on the resolution, too.
Yeah, if, if, if others think that's a good thing to do, I, again, I just hate to see that included automatically in a limit of disturbance or clearing and grading area, if it's not absolutely necessary.
Yeah, so I mean, what you could do is sort of draw the clearing and grading limit line to exclude that little, you know, that expansion area with a note on the plan, and maybe, maybe hatch or, you know, sort of separately demarcate that expansion area with a note on the plan that says that it can be cleared only in the event that the expansion area is needed. But otherwise, the clearing and grading limit line would stop, you know, before you get to that expansion area.
That's a great idea, and get a Phil waiver too, as well.
Yep, you know, and just have to make sure that if the secondary area is used, you know, then there's going to be a, a review that could be done now, and just say, well, gee, do we have to replace the trees, or you have to pay the money in accordance with existing regulations at the time that the, the secondary system is used? Just so that makes that clear and simple, too.
So in the future, they would just have to get a building permit and not come back to the planning board?
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
Have to go to staff for the trees, but yeah.
Alan, does that sound like it'll be, okay?
Yeah, that sounds like a reasonable medium point.
Okay.
I think it sounds fine.
Okay. Good, so we'll try to do that. Okay, I'm monopolizing. Any other questions from board members, concerns?
I know, does Dennis have any comments?
Thank you. That was, I guess, because we work together, you must have helped me there, Dick. My only qualifying question was going to be, does anything change with respect to if down the road, there's a change in ownership? And then it's time to start to take trees down and, and work on the expansion area? Does that have any effect on what you guys are planning for in present?
Well, it shouldn't.
No, these approvals will apply not just to current property owner, but any future property owners as well.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis, maybe you know something on this. You know, we have this, apparently, the lands behind this lot are public, they're, they're owned by the town. And I noticed that was a ten-foot easement just to the north of this property. I guess the easement lies on the neighbor's property. What is the condition for that, or what was that designed under the, you know, like the trail network that at some point, that could be some sort of a connecting area? What's the status of that? Is it, is it used as such? Yeah?
I'll answer, I believe, A, that was the intent. B, from my inspections of the site and walking mostly recently with Alan, it is not functioning as that, it is not passable.
Okay. Is it something that we would like to have passable? Or is it something that's just far-fetched and too far in the future or unlikely to happen? I guess the, the lands behind this are basically wetland and swamp, perhaps?
Well, you mean per the, as you, you would eventually reach the lands, which you could see where the delineation line is. It's a, it transitions into that, and I would say, yeah, the majority of that property is, is wetland.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I, I hesitate to say much, because, you know, I think some of that easement, it, you know, I'll, I'll try to be delicate and say, I'm sure there's a hybrid of, you know, some of it is just probably overgrown, and some of it has been facilitated to form an impasse, I guess. So, you know, in order to open it back up, you know, I think we'd have to, you know, take out a few logs of the Beaver Dam, so to speak, and maybe upset the family that's living there. So it may not be a simple solution.
Okay, got it. Okay, just a question. Anyone else, any questions?
Are there obligations associated with that easement, or no?
We would have to check to see if there was an actual easement agreement recorded with any maintenance obligations, either on behalf of the town or the property owner.
Yeah, they were recorded. I was here, believe it or not, when they did the subdivision, and I do remember looking at them. They probably were recorded, but the Jen's point, I don't know what the obligation is. We'd have to get a copy of it, give it to Jen, have her take a look at it.
Yeah, back a, a number of years ago, there was a little bit more of an initiative to have these connecting trails that would connect open space throughout the town. And these, these easements pop up every once in a while, we see those, and it looks like that's why they were there. And this would make some sense, I mean, in theory, that someone would walk, you know, from the cul-de-sac out And it looks like that's why they were there. And this would make some sense. I mean, in theory, that someone would walk, you know, from the cul-de-sac out to the. The public lands and. Go look at the Beaver.
This this subdivision was built in ninety-four.
Yep. Okay, uh, any other questions? If not, are there any questions for the public? Pam, do you see anyone with a hand raised? Any questions from the public?
Uh, if anyone has any questions, you could raise your digital hand. I don't see anybody with their digital hand raised this time. So there's people there, but. No, no one has their hand raised.
Okay. Uh, one of one quick thing I saw that, uh, in the clearing area, there are a number of rock walls on the property, Alan, especially out there in that southern area. It seemed like that was in the LD area, but are you going to leave the walls as is? Uh, the ones out in the outer edges of the property? Yeah, in that north, uh, excuse me, southwest corner?
Yes, there's no intent to move anything. Do any of these stone walls which are present?
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Or or even this, I've got a stone wall.
Right. Okay. Terrific. Um. So are we, have we given enough direction then? Are we satisfied with the clearing and grading limit lines that are being proposed? With the exception of that, uh, area that we talked about on the expansion area, where we will set up some sort of contingent language. Uh, to protect that area to the greatest extent possible. Uh, but. If they need to expand the area, um, it will be, you know, one-stop building permit. Where the, um, trees and the the land and whatever is 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 already sort of contingently approved. Good to me. Okay. All right. Does that help you, Alan, for, uh, you know, just finishing that up? Okay?
Yes, yes.
So what we can do is, uh, we can either close a public hearing, just schedule us for a resolution, keep the public hearing open and and. Schedule for, you know, closing public hearing and and the resolution, uh, whatever is the preference of board members, uh, happy to, uh, facilitate.
Well, I'm ready to go forward. I mean, I think the things that we've debated and discussed. I think they can be handled by by staff and appropriate words placed on the the drawings. Remind any future people looking at it that, hey, this might, this might be a slight complication here, but just got to go one place, one time.
Tom, Eldad, are you okay with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good with going to a resolution.
Okay, good. So let's do it. Is there a motion then to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, so the motion is carried five zero. So what we'll do is just schedule next for our resolution, Alan, and, um, and be all set.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Okay, very good.
Have a good night.
Yep, take care.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is a request for an extension of approval. And this is for the Newcastle Fire Department, the fire station and related facilities of four ninety-one and four ninety-five King Street. Chappaqua, so this is a request for an extension of the approvals that we have, uh. Uh, I don't know when we first did this. Back in two thousand and sixteen. Um, anyway, uh, here we are, the applicants here. Hi, Lynn. Hi, Terrence. Um, maybe you could just give us a quick update from what we, besides what we see in the press.
Okay, sure. So, um, at this point, I believe on, um, we we've submitted our. Uh, what I believe to be our final round of, um, documents. We've received comments from, um, Jennifer and Bob, and we'll be complying with them with with respect to the documents. Um, on the, um, planning front, I can let Joe, um. Describe, uh, how things are going there, but I believe that, uh, we've made good progress, um, on that front also. Uh, at this time, the, uh, the board is, um, has had a meeting and they're considering outreach to the public. And they had a recent meeting in which they discussed, um, very clearly the the need for the expansion of this firehouse. Um, in terms of safety for both the firefighters and and the community and in order to be able to fit the. The the new. Fire apparatus into the, uh, into the facility. So, um, we're requesting another extension for six months. And, uh, greatly appreciate, uh, all the extensions that we've received so far.
Okay. Uh, Terrence or Joseph, if you can, uh, give us any supplement on that or or Bob or, you know, uh, anyone just give us some guidance?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure if, uh, Joe's on the line. He had another event.
I'm here.
Okay, please, Joe, go ahead, please.
All right, sure. Yeah, I'm here. Um, so in terms of the site plans and subdivision, we submitted, uh, we we've made two submissions to. Bob for review. Um, our initial, uh, submission was well received back, I think, before the last time we got an extension. Um, we had a few other minor conditions to address. And also the subdivision, uh, map that we had to submit and get reviewed. Uh, Bob provided some comments on that, which we returned to him today. Uh, you'll have the paper copy tomorrow, Bob. We submitted it via email today. Um, but we're getting very close on addressing the, um, the town's concerns or or conditions of approval. And also working with DOT to get, uh, finalize that step. Once we have the subdivision plat acceptable to Bob, we'll go ahead and get the signatures and. File it with the county and all that. So we are, we are very close to where we need to be.
When might construction start? If it's approved?
Uh, that that that's a question that's going to have to be, uh, answered o- o- over the next, uh, few months. Uh, of course, as you know, it needs to go out to a referendum first. And, uh, there's a lot of variables, uh, that we're considering right now. So, uh, I I'm not in a, I'm not in a position to, uh. To even speculate on that right now.
Okay.
Bob, silly, I have a a quick question for you. Um, and it's really a little bit tangential. Uh, but since the DOT is going to be involved, perhaps because of Route one twenty. As you know, we've had some, um. Requests for crosswalks up in that area now that ninety-one is filling out. Um, will it be any ability to put in any crosswalks, um, across one seventeen? Uh, either at the intersection of one twenty or another spot? Um, I was out there recently, well, I'm out there every night, but, uh, I noticed that there's very few crosswalks. There's one there from, uh, the gas station. Across on one twenty. I'm not sure there's even one in front of the firehouse. But we have people living in ninety-one and people in those other homes. Uh, it's it's noteworthy. I mean, I understand there's all different kinds of problems with it. But, uh, can DOT address that, um, as as long as they're looking at this application?
Oh, I believe the plans they submitted to the state that the planning board looked at shows only a crosswalk going north and south. Parallel to Bedford Road along one twenty, but there's nothing going east and west. From the other side, from the east side of one seventeen to the west side. Correct me if I'm wrong, Joe.
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I think you're correct. Um, and I'm not in a place where I can look at the plan right now, so, um. But, yeah, we we did go through a lot of stuff with the DOT when we were in front of the board. Um, and got the stage one completed at that time. We're now in stage two. Um, I think there is a crosswalk. At. At one seventeen. I I think there is one, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, but we we are, we do have the sidewalk. If you were, you might recall, we did the, um. Couple of sidewalk plans and it was decided to present one of those plans to DOT. We have presented that to DOT. Um, and, uh. Per discussions with DOT and Bob, we are proceeding with that sidewalk. And they are requiring certain improvements that are associated with that, crossing signals, et cetera. So. I don't know if that addresses what you're talking about, but with the sidewalk that was part of our approval that we needed to. Um, explore with the DOT, there are some improvements that the fire district will need to perform. Uh, as part of that work that includes crossing roads, et cetera.
Okay. Yeah, I I wouldn't suggest that this really is, uh, something of the fire district. It's would be their responsibility. It's just. I think it's a DOT responsibility, so I wouldn't want to burden this applicant this. Uh, I I don't think that would be appropriate. But it's just, uh, as long as the DOT is looking at this area, it might not be a a bad idea that they look at it in a more of a global, uh, way and, uh. Uh, there's very, very limited east-west crossings. I there is one down by the gas station, but I think that's about it.
You're right, Robert. There's only one. I- i- it's down by the gas station. There's no way to cross, uh, uh, those roads there. Right. It's it's it's, uh, it's it's a, it's an issue. Yes.
Say, Bob, I I think you.
I would, I would second that.
Brought up a really excellent, um, observation there, an excellent point because, um. You know, maybe it's not just DOT. It certainly isn't the fire department's, uh, job to solve this, I don't think. Um, it it maybe, you know, the town really ought to be looking at it because to the extent that that. The, the rezoning district that, uh, was originally proposed. Um, included this area as part of, I'll put this in in, you know, air quotes, the Chappaqua hamlet. You would think that all of the, you would think that that all of the streetscape, walkability, um, all of those sort of good. Uh, and right, I think, goals for creating a, uh, a safe and attractive pedestrian environment would. Apply to this part of town also, this part of the ham, so to speak also. And to the extent that, um. Uh, it, there's a challenge here because it's just so much through traffic of one seventeen and a lot of turning movements and. And I've crossed myself from the shopping center over across Bedford Road over to ninety-one, just to sort of look at things. And that's a, that's a tricky thing to do, I tell you. Um, and it it's not something that that, uh. You know, that encourages pedestrian movement through there. And so maybe this is something that. That the planning board could could suggest that the town, uh, take a look at, and maybe there are some initiatives that they want to take on there.
Yeah, I I think it has the tendency to cut that side of the hamlet off. And you're very correct in identifying it was supposed to be part of the overall, you know. The eastern part of the hamlet, so, yeah.
And also, if if we're looking at re- retail on both sides, which right now there is, and. You know, you're looking at a restaurant, like I've I've actually tried crossing that street to go from what was Chappaqua Tavern. On, you know, to the other, to the other end. Um, and it's, it's very tricky and, you know. If you have children, forget about it because, you know, if you parked in the lot there and then you're trying to cross over. To meet, you know, at the restaurant across, that's a problem.
Yeah.
Can I, I think you're right. The the retail, uh, at ninety-one Bedford, I mean. We require that by zoning, unless I'm mistaken, and it seems to me that if we're going to require retail, we ought to provide an environment where it could. Has to better survive. And that would be, um, you know, an environment where people can actually get to it on foot.
And we should, uh, yeah, if it means slowing down the traffic, it would be ideal. I've actually been rear-ended exactly there. As well, just because somebody was just coming way too fast and. Behind me and I was slowing down for a pedestrian and the person hit me from the back. So literally right outside ninety-one Broadway. Yeah. I mean, ninety-one Bedford.
Yeah. Okay, well, again, this is not really worthy applicant. I I mean, I think it's interesting to talk about because I I think it's important. But again, I I'm not suggesting that this is something that the, uh, should be a burden for the applicant. They've done, they've had to deal with sidewalks. The entrances and they've had their, they've had their fill of DOT, so there's no need to impose anymore, uh, at this point.
Agreed.
So is there any, yes, I'm sorry, Dick.
Uh, you know, given all that that we've said, maybe we should put this on an agenda in, uh, you know, several months. Getting close to where the October twenty-second timeline is. And, uh, see what we can, we can, uh. Do with discussions with the town board as appropriate.
Yeah, I I think it's something that we could, uh, even now draft a memo to the town board to have them. Take this under consideration. I think it's, I think it's really important. For all the the issues that Tom and Canon have raised, uh, these are, these are real issues. Um, you've you've. Essentially disconnected that area, uh, to a large extent. So, yeah. Um, but in the meantime, is there a motion then to approve the, uh, extension that the applicant has sought? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, it's carried five zero and you're all set. So. See you maybe before or maybe in six months or whatever, uh, but we'll, we'll talk soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I- i- if I, I just may, thank you very much to this board and also to, uh, Newcastle, uh, Building Department. Bob and Terry particularly, they've really worked hard on this and we greatly appreciate your diligent, uh, consideration regarding the application. Over the years and we look forward to moving this, uh, project forward. It's it's a very important critical infrastructure project. And then we we look forward to bringing it, uh, uh, forward to the public soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence.
Thank you, Terrence.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Thanks, everyone. Bye-bye.
Okay, our next item is a discussion item. And this is our continued discussion on, uh, North Greeley. So I hope everyone saw the, uh, the memo that we sent out to the town board. And I want to give special thanks to Tom and Sabrina and Felicia. I think you guys just did a fantastic job in getting that out. Um, I would have written you privately, but it was not as good as giving you public accolades because I thought it was just terrific, first rate. And you guys turned it around very nicely, so, uh, good to have that behind us. I don't know if there's been a response. I don't know if it's been looked at yet or considered by the town board. But, uh, we will continue to flood them with information and and memos and, uh, see where we go. What I thought we would do tonight, because I think it's it's it's, uh, important, right? And we talked earlier today, uh, I say we. I mean, Sabrina, Felicia, Bob and and Dennis. Um, about the next step. And it seems to me that the next step that we really need to tackle is something that's fundamental to planning, and that is the parking issue. And, you know, memo speaks a little bit about it, but we really need to make, um, get some information. Because I think ultimately the parking is going to give us a yield and tell us what we can do, what we can't do for. Retail and and, uh, residential. And what the mix is. And as our memo memo indicated, um, you know, retail really eats up a lot of, uh, parking. Um, under our current requirements. And, uh, you know, we may just be set up, you know, we, I don't think we should do this blinded. Blindside it. We should really understand what, uh, the yields are and what the constraints are and, uh, based on. Our current code, which Sabrina's very much up on, as well as what we looked at and what we studied under the form-based code. In terms of what, uh, what those numbers might be now. So I think, uh, I I'm going to let Sabrina do a lot of the talking here because she's really up on the, uh, parking numbers. Um, she was also driving during part of our me- our our meeting, so I think that's really important. Uh, that she's had actual experience during the course of our meeting on the road as a lab, uh, and can speak to it. By the way, you look like you were in a space, uh, like you're like a cosmonaut when you were on a phone there. It was angled, you look just like most people. Only thing missing was the helmet. So, uh.
I I guarantee you I was not in space. Um, but I am back on earth right now. Um, I, you know, I can just quickly just talk about parking in the, uh, business retail parking zone. Um, you know, for many years now, the planning board has reviewed applications for change of use in the hamlet. Once in a while you get new applications. And because these buildings are located within the town's parking district, right? And that was created long ago in regards to the train station parking lots. Um, the public parking lot that is also downtown, that there was never, um. You know, that that parking was waived, it, you know, particularly if. The building itself did not have land area to afford parking or if the property had dedicated portions of their lands. To the parking district. And you will recall, um, most recently. Um, within the past ten years, there was an application where we actually did take additional land for the parking lot that is behind. Um. Um, South Greeley against the train tracks. So even when there was changes in upper floors with apartments. Particularly with the Woodburn lot, there was never, um, a requirement to afford more parking. That is how parking has worked in. there was never a requirement to afford more parking. That is how parking has worked in the area. And I think that that's very important to recognize. So regardless of the retail establishment on the first floor, which is a required first floor commercial use, there have never been any, any required parking spaces, if you will. It wasn't until just recently that I actually had the applicant figure the required parking so that we had a baseline of how many parking spaces would be required in relation to the code. When we were looking at revising the parking requirements in the town code as part of the form-based code discussions, it was very much an update in regards to parking based on uses of today as compared to when our parking code was created back in the day. You know, in, in some instances, the form-based code required more parking spaces. In other instances, it did not. You know, so I can speak to the fact that when we were, when I was working with the transportation engineer in regards to updating parking form-based code, I was really pushing for one parking space per residential apartment. The traffic engineer said, no way. You know, basically there is a, a percentage formula, 1.1 to 1.5, depending on the number of bedrooms. Also depending on whether or not it is a rental unit or an ownership unit, and that's in regards to residential. In regards to commercial, I think it's 2.8 parking spaces per thousand square feet of commercial use. We would never be able to have any commercial use in the hamlet if we had that requirement. You know, if you had a 10,000 square foot commercial building with apartments above it, you would need at least 28 parking, more than 28 parking spaces for that, for that commercial use. So, you know, I, I don't have any answers for you when it comes to parking. I think parking, you know, really has to be examined in regards to what is occurring in the world today. And in regards to that, what type of population we are, we are looking at populating housing in the hamlet as opposed to a single-family home?
So if I could, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Sabrina. I'm sorry.
No, no, I just, here's the thing, you know, again, I don't know how much more, Bob, you want me to extrapolate, extrapolate regarding existing parking versus future parking and, and kind of what we're looking at in regards to housing in the hamlet being of a different, than a single-family home. So, you know, I, I open this up to discussion.
So I'd like to, okay, thanks. I'd like to ask a question if I could about the parking district. And it sounds, maybe you didn't mean it this way, but it sounded as though we have been taking the, the strategy that, you know, there is enough existing capacity in the parking district that we can and have been approving applications without the requirement for parking because there actually is enough, enough excess parking to, to fulfill that need, whatever the need might be. And we're not even sure what the need might be because apparently we're not really that concerned about the ratios anymore. So I guess I'd ask, is that true? Is there actually an excess capacity of parking in the parking district? Do we know this for a fact?
So I cannot answer that for a fact. I can say that, that are the lots full every day, Monday through Friday or Monday through Sunday? No, they are not full. You know, we have not approved a slew of residential in the hamlet. We've been looking at commercial uses. We've been looking at commercial uses that, you know, there's, there's parking lots. There's a Woodburn parking lot. There's the parking lot behind South Greeley. You know, the town, you know, we are not full, if you will. The south parking lot of the train station is definitely not occupied. You know, there has never been any analysis that has been done. It is always something that we talked about doing as far as when we look at, you know, rezoning, looking at the parking lots and whether or not there is availability in the parking lots. But the town code today says there's enough parking. You don't have to ask for it, basically.
So it doesn't seem like the, maybe I'm wrong. It doesn't seem like a difficult calculation to do. We know how much retail space there is in the hamlet. We know how much residential space there is in the hamlet, which is probably diminished compared to the amount of retail. And we know how many parking spaces there are in the parking district. If we separate out the train station for a minute, because that's a separate thing for, just for a minute. But, I mean, you can come up with a number of spaces per thousand square that, that's available per thousand square feet of residential, I'm sorry, retail. And so, I mean, is it 2.8? Do we have four, five spaces per thousand square feet? I mean, to me, that would be kind of an important baseline to understand. If there is excess capacity still in the parking district, then that would, I think, affect decisions about, you know, zoning density and, and, you know, where we might go with that.
Yeah, I, I think that would be a very good piece of information to have. And I guess we could figure that based on, you know, the current space for retail. So it would be a good baseline. And I think, again, you know, we all have to identify, you know, those parking areas that we have in town. There's the parking area along the railroad, you know, by, I guess, the, the bottom of King Street. Then you've got the lot on North Greeley, and then you've got the lot, it's a considerable lot there behind South Greeley, all that retail. I mean, I'm there and I go there, that's where I park a lot in the weekends when I have to walk around, do stuff. And it's, it's, there's always spaces on weekends. Even if the people playing at the, at the school, they're, they're, you know, at Bell School and having an event. I've never had a problem finding a space.
Right. I mean, and, and so, you know, here's the thing, it is easy enough to do, right? You know, we would have to do that parking analysis. You know, I think that this board should recommend that that be done as part of, you know, your, your review memo.
Yes, I was going to say just like.
Canaan, it's very hard to hear you.
It's horrible.
Capacity today is, oh, let me try again. Is it better now?
Yes.
Uh, sorry about that. So this, I, I agree that we should have the study because we need to know what we have today. But I would also, I would also sort of say, can we turn this around on its head a little bit and say, what is it? Because we talk about walkability, this being, you know, a town that we all want to walk around, et cetera, et cetera. And we are saying it, you know, that people, knowing what the use is, retail plus housing, and then what the parking need should be, and then we can go address, well, there's a shortfall. And then is there really a shortfall? And how do we cope with it? Like, isn't that the right strategy? Like, that, that's just my thought on it.
Well, that would be the next step. Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be the next step.
And, and then the other issue is to calculate that shortfall. I mean, we're, we're trying to project for a hamlet that's going to be more active and more energized. So it's projecting forward. But again, the other issues that we have to, it seems to me that we have to work on is the appropriate, and is, I don't think there'll be an agreement on this, the appropriate ratios. So, you know, we have different ratios. Sabrina was telling me about these before and they're, she sent this to us a couple of weeks ago when we first started these conversations. So if you can't, you know, try to look that up. But, you know, is, is, is 1.4 the right number? Do we have to have a space for every single unit? Do we have to have enough overflow for a couple visitor spots as well? Maybe we could use the, the town park parking for visitors, you know, in, in complimentary times. So there are these kinds of factors that we really have to look at. I personally have my doubts about ratios that get down below one. I think that's unrealistic. I, I know I hear about the, the rideshare industry and this is what's going to happen. And, and everyone comes here and they're just going to be going down into New York City. So all they have to do is walk to the train station, except that the people aren't going to New York City as much anymore. And I think, I think this personally, the, the hybrid model is going to take, take root, and I don't think it's going to change. People will be going to the city, but not five days a week, unless they can't help it. But anyway.
And, and I think, sorry, I was going to say, I think that that's where the study would help, right? The study would help to tell us what ratio is it currently? Because that's sort of giving us a good idea of, oh, well, we always find parking when we get there. If I want to buy something from, you know, X or Y store. I mean, we, that's one of the analyses. And of course, the traffic analysis would then depend on like how many units. I agree, ownership and rental would matter because it's like, who are these people? And are they getting on the train and getting out of this, of the town and just living within the hamlet? Or do they need a certain number of cars to get to grocery store, et cetera, et cetera, which will happen, of course.
Did the engineer give us a difference in those numbers, Sabrina, in terms of ownership or rental? Was that?
Yes, they did. And, and I can hang on two seconds and I can get them for you. The, for example, a studio that is a rental is a 0.85 space per dwelling unit as compared to a 0.9 space. For a one-bedroom as a rental, it's 1.1 space. If for an ownership, it's 1.2. So it's slightly higher if you own as opposed to renting.
Wow, that's kind of, I mean, for the, I, I guess I can understand that if those distinctions, first of all, it sounds to me like somebody's thinking on this too hard. But if, if that were, if we were talking about a large development, right? In the aggregate, those numbers, you know, might actually mean something.
Yes.
The amount of development we're talking about, literally 1.1 and 1.2 to me is, is not really, you know, it's, it's not meaningful. So.
Factor it into, not to interrupt you, Tom, but, but in thinking about, this is where the height issue comes into play.
Yes.
Because many proposals we have seen from developers and not necessarily proposals that have been presented to boards, either the town board or your board, but applicants who've come in to kind of spearhead what they want to do, right? They always come in and they're closer to 42 units. If you look at Conifer, right, which is 24, 29, 24, how many is that, Bob?
24.
24 units. They have one parking space per unit in Conifer underneath the building. But, you know, again, it's, it's, you know, do you meet your parking requirement at 42 units, right? But if you start doing the numbers at 42 units, you start building extra parking spaces.
Because you also do round up. So if you see a 1.2.
You can't have a 0.1 parking space. You would round up to two parking spaces.
So no matter whether it's 1.1 and 1.2, we're looking at two parking spaces that are going to be reparked.
Right. So it's.
It comes into play when you start multiplying units.
Right.
Go ahead. Can I, can I jump in?
Absolutely, of course.
So a few, a few things on this. I'm happy we're talking about it. It may seem boring to some, but it is actually really important. One, if we can get like, you know, like Tom suggesting and Conan suggested, study, it's, it's helpful. I had an economics professor who used to say, we don't make policy by anecdote. And, you know, Bob's anecdote about never having an issue doesn't, doesn't in and of itself mean, determine our policy.
I also take two choices each time.
You're one of those guys, parking.
Just because I can't aim.
So the study will be helpful. But when we think about parking, there's, you know, there's a lot of different things to think about. Obviously, you know, we've talked a little bit about, you know, parking associated with retail and commercial uses and parking associated with residential uses. They're very different. I look at them almost opposite. When we talk about retail, the way I think about it is, you know, what is the minimum amount of parking necessary to make the retail successful? And when it comes to residential, it's, for me, it's the opposite. What is the maximum amount of parking we could do in order to make that successful? I know, you know, Sabrina, you were suggesting that during the discussions in the, for the FBC. I know that's a four-letter word these days. But, you know, you're, you know, working towards bringing it down to one, one space per unit, residential unit. That makes sense to me because of the locations that we're talking about. And it's sort of a kind of a chicken and egg, you know, you know, when we were talking about, you know, what, sure, depending on who we ask, there might be a demand for parking, but if we do less parking, then there'll be a different, the demand will be different, right? And so we can't pretend that, you know, zoning is not a tool to have certain outcomes. It's not a perfect tool. It's a blunt tool, but, but it can be used to, to, to shape our town. And so it sort of gets at some of the values that we think are important when thinking through some of these issues. And so again, you know, just like Bob was, sorry, Tom was saying about, you know, 91 Bedford. If we zoned retail for the ground floor, then we should allow it to be successful with walkability, you know, crosswalks, access, whatever that may, that means, because it is a challenge to get to that site. I don't know if that's what's preventing the retail from going there more likely, more pandemic-era global factors, but.
Just so folks know, that building is fully tenanted.
It is?
It, it, on the bottom, it is not completely occupied yet, but there are tenants for each of those spaces at this point.
Oh, that's, that's news to me. Are they there?
Not yet. They have to, they have to fit out the space.
Okay, all right. Because I pass there daily and I haven't seen it.
They're not there yet, but they're, they're under construction.
That, that's great news.
They're not on vacant store list anymore.
That's great. Well, we'll all be careful when we walk over there. But, but just, you know, just thinking through, so when it comes to the retail piece of this, thinking through again, what makes retail successful in towns like ours? And looking at, you know, we've talked about this a little bit over the last couple of years, looking at adjacent towns and why are there, why is their retail successful? You know, I think parking has a lot to do with it, ease of parking. And so that's why I'm saying like, thinking through, what is the minimum amount of parking necessary to make the retail successful? And then just the flip of it on, on, on the residential piece, given that we're talking about multifamily in a walkable area, we should, I think, from my perspective, be trying to do the absolute, you know, have a maximum in order to make that successful and no more than that.
For, for a point of note, the 91 Bedford is in the BR zoning district, not the BRP zoning district. So this board approved that application in accordance with the code requirement for parking today. Okay, so there's ample parking on that site for the uses on that site in accordance with our existing code.
Right, right.
So.
That distinction.
That was, I agree with all that, Eldad. There, there's an irony here. I used to go to these conferences, ULI conferences, and these, not only developers would present, but there'd be, you know, town officials, planners, mayors, so on and so forth, and talk about one of the topics that would come up often is parking. And there's a, you hear these, I would hear these stories about these mayors say, you know, we just need more parking because, you know, all of our parking lots are full. And you'd have another mayor who's sitting in a town or running a town where the parking lots are empty. And he's telling the first mayor, I wish I had your problem, right? Because that means that, because that means that actually your, your town is alive and it's vibrant and there are people coming here and it's in demand. And so there's sort of an irony to that, right? It's, it's sort of like, was it Yogi Berra? Nobody goes there anymore. It's too crowded. But the, I, to say that, and this is part of the, I think, the, what you were saying before about how economics studies things and makes decisions, to say that, well, it's working fine now, right? Maybe it's working fine now because there are not enough people coming. Because actually there's not enough demand there yet. And that once we can, once the town, if the town is successful in building the kind of demand that has a lot of people on the street, we will need the parking to satisfy that. So to use current experience to project in the future what we need, I think we ought to be able. I think we ought to be a little bit careful about that.
But I, one thing, El Dad, you articulated far better than I did, and I think it's really important. As much as this sounds like it's nitty gritty and just, so it's just planning, it's just numbers. Inherently, this parking issue really is policymaking as well.
It is.
This is, this is what will shape the hamlet to a large degree. I mean, there will be other things that will shape the hamlet. But let's not, let's not fool ourselves. This really is fundamentally important to shaping the the hamlet that we want to see. So I thank you, El Dad, for bringing that up because that is absolutely the situation. We can kind of sneak it underneath the radar and everyone thinks we're just talking about parking. But inherently, you're talking about a very, very important ingredient to to the feel, the shape, the energy of of a hamlet. So thank you for for articulating that so well. Thank you.
As we discussed last time, um, if if it requires much more parking to do retail rather than residential, that's a, and and you decide to satisfy the parking for retail, then that's a, that is a public policy decision that has implications, right?
Yep.
Uh, you're deciding that, you know, the multifamily housing and all the things that go along with that. But uh, for instance, the affordable housing, which is also an important objective, maybe takes second fiddle or is seen equal to another, you know, ten, twenty thousand square feet of retail. And so I think that there actually is, in the conversations over the form based code, it seemed to be rezoning, let's just say the rezoning initiatives and the one that's happening now. These things seem to be treated equally, and I'm not sure that they really are in terms of land uses. And I'm not sure that that maybe we ought to actually start to put some priorities on these tags and look at things, um, you know, look at things through that light. And in my mind, it ought to be multifamily housing.
Yeah.
Uh, I have a question on the order of priority, which is sort of relevant to this conversation, right? Because from what I'm hearing is, we're saying that policy will have to be determined based on what our parking decisions are. Uh, so before we decide how much housing we're putting in there, how much retail can we support there? We're making a decision of what the parking ratio should be, and that's sort of dictating how much we can build there?
I wouldn't put it exactly like that.
Look, I'd put it the other way.
Yeah, we, yeah, we'd have to get the information.
Exactly, exactly.
And see where we're going, but.
Sure.
I think it's a very, very important ingredient uh, in this. And and um, it's really why, you know, it's why I wanted to tackle this. Uh, the retail I thought was important to tackle first because that spells out a certain amount of usage. And I think what we, what we gave to the town board, I hope we opened their eyes and said, understand the the opportunity cost of of the retail that we're we're requiring. And I I would agree with Tom in in that it it has an impact on what you're going to be able to do for housing unless you make some changes. And then parking is the next thing. So again, I think it's leading us, and Sabrina's reminded us uh, many times that, don't forget, North Greeley currently is is zoned commercial. And she got through to my thick head this morning and finally said, that means it's not that it's uh, it's something that you you can build commercial, but if you rebuild, you must have commercial on the first floor. And that alone to me is is probably something that's thwarting development, uh, frankly. But in addition, does that, you know, maybe that zone should be changed so that's an option. Not that you take it away, but maybe an option so that we have what we're probably going to find out from looking at retail, looking at parking is that that come that much retail space in our hamlet uh, comes at a considerable cost to other uh, uh, priorities.
Yeah, so I guess what you're saying is there will be a whole bunch of back and forth before we come, like, we need the parking to start with, but then we go back and see how much retail, how much housing, then we'll go back to the parking and sort of come up with the ratios. That that would make sense to, that that certainly would. Um, the 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 only other thing I would say is, sorry, if some someone's saying something.
You're okay, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I I really think that, you know, there is, I have also seen towns, which is why I would like for us to really try to be data centric to start with. Not that I know enough about how we use that data to make the right decision. But you know, the idea that you have a town like Stanford where, you know, there is ample parking built. I know it's a big town, but you know, there there's public parking built and then that's sort of, you know, uh, there are these arrangements where the big, the bigger multifamily sort of shares those parking lots. And the the ground reality is that those parking lots are not ever fully utilized. I've seen that in White Plains, I've seen that in Stanford. So there's, there's no, you can, you know, to Tom's point about, in the future, you might need more parking because you have more retail. But then it can also go where there's still, there is enough, you know, there's maximum retail, there's enough housing. And then yet there is like all these empty spaces lying there. But they're just sort of tagged in different ways where this is parking for residential. This is, it's just the timing is wrong. So if you go, if you go during the day, it's empty after a certain hour. So there's, there's all this change. And also, I don't see that parking is going to be utilized the same way today than it's going to be utilized ten years from now. So again, I don't know how we plan for it or how we think about it. Like, those are the things in my head that I would struggle with.
Okay.
Now, I'm curious, and are we, are we looking at whether each building or each little development is going to have underground parking? Or is it going to be ground level parking? Or uh, is there uh?
So we had made.
Canaan said that that, um, you know, in Stanford, they have a parking silo almost, I think, and then silos. And if that's the case, why can't we look and see where we have space to put a tower up for parking? And it uh, you know, that might solve some of the problems.
One of the realities of the hamlet is that we have a very high groundwater table in a majority of the hamlet, right?
Yep.
So going subsurface is not an option in most places unless you're going to incorporate it into the King Street Hill.
Uh, is that the same with North Greeley? Certainly, South Greeley is basically.
Definitely, at that interchange, the it changes between north and south. But you have uh, you have slopes when it starts coming into North Greeley.
Right. But I can tell you that, uh, just in watching the experience that we had in Pleasantville, which has required uh, onsite underground parking uh, on the one that's on our street, um, they went underground. Um, and you know, they had to go through a considerable de-watering, but also just an incredible amount of blasting to to make it work. I I don't, it seems like they have way too much parking there, but that's what it is. And then the other, the big giant uh, apartment complex. Yeah, okay, uh, which is, I think, at two or three floors of subterranean parking, um, had to blast through, um, you know, marble and hit considerable time to time. So uh, that's why it's called Marble Avenue, by the way. It used to be a car, when you go to shop right in Thorne, without, it was a car.
Yeah.
Um, so anyway, um, yeah, so people have gone through, I mean, that had to be extremely expensive. So even doing something, I think, South Greeley, to Sabrina's point, you'd have to have location devices because it really is so high. But maybe North Greeley would be something different where you might have to de-water a little bit. But um, uh, it it's just a matter of uh, working out the costs and seeing if it makes sense.
Yeah, there is a, there is a a construction um, methodology or or technique. Uh, it's called a bathtub construction where you essentially are building a bathtub, right? It keeps the water out instead of keeping the water in. Um, and the weight of the construction is is enough to keep it uh, from, you know, starting to rise out of the ground and be buoyant. Uh, just means a lot of waterproofing. It doesn't, I'm not suggesting it's cheap because it probably means building a small copper dam, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, but if the consequences, and this is where maybe you need to speak to some developer, if the consequences of doing that means you get an extra floor of residential to pay for it, to help pay for it. Um, you know, maybe, maybe it's something which is not out of the cards or you don't go all the way down, you only go half a floor down. And this, so that the subject gets, it it quickly gets pretty complicated in terms of, well, what really is the development capacity of the area? And I think that this is one of the things that Cana's getting at, which is how how do we arrive at a number? I mean, how do we get there? And and and, you know, what is it all, what does it mean in the end? Maybe I'm speaking um, incorrectly about your thoughts, Canaan, but um, I think that there is, we can't be too definitive about this because there are too many unknowns, I think.
Right.
Yes, yes, I agree with that. And I feel like the closer we get to some sort of actual numbers of any sort, like, you know, and and I know the F B form based code sort of attempted to do that, where it said, no build, maximum build, and there's two different variations. But I feel like that's probably the best way for us to say, if we do X, this is the parking implication. And then we can arrive at something. If we do Y, then that's the implication. If we do Z, that's the implication. And if we don't do, you know, that's, I think that's the only sort of uh, logical sort of defined by numbers that we can go because uh, if we can ever do suggesting subterranean or surface parking, et cetera, et cetera, without thinking about costs and what the implications are on, like, if we're giving a developer, hey, you got to build a subterranean garage, it's going to be like, add another two, I need at least two stories to make up for this. So uh, for us as a, to me, we we almost need to think about what do we want to put in the hamlet? And then sort of go back to this question. Of course, we should do the traffic, get the parking study sort of in front of us as we do that. But simultaneously, we should start thinking about what is the, what's the housing that we are looking to talk about? How many units are we really talking about? Is there, can we put it into like three different buckets and say, you know, I'm just making this up? Hundred units, hundred fifty units, two hundred units, four hundred units, five hundred units? And then just sort of do a study along with that and the retail and see what, you know, like the good old, you know, how we would do it if we were trying to do site fits, you know, in a, in a on and as a planning exercise or as an architectural design exercise? Because that's the only way to arrive with realistic numbers that we can get our arms around and then talk about cost implication, all of that. My my two cents.
You know, I think that the doing the um, those test fits uh, on the, on the west side of North Greeley would be relatively easy because there are just a couple of big lots. On the east side, you'd have the variations of how many lots you assemble, you know, and how that all works because they're really small lots. And uh, you know, do you assemble, you do the study based on a three lot assembly or four lot assembly? Or, you know, or one lot at a time? And you get drastically different numbers, I think, not necessarily drastically when you get to three and four lots. But you get different numbers depending on how you assemble the the lots because you could get a, you can get an apartment building if you assemble four lots, right? But if you do uh, do one lot at a time, and you assemble four lots, you have more efficient parking. But if you do one lot at a time, you can end up with a much lower numbers, much lower number of of units. And that's part of the, I'm all for doing test fits, conceptual test fits. Uh, and maybe, you know, maybe you do them for one versus four lot or five lot assemblies just to so that, you know, we get an idea. And this is not difficult to do, really. I mean, it really isn't. I mean, you could, you you could.
I agree.
Do it in a few days. It's not a big deal.
So Sabrina, would this, would this be something that we would write to the town board to ask them to authorize your your department to do this?
Yes.
Okay.
You can call us over, Sabrina. We, we will volunteer, I would volunteer to like sketch for you. So there you go. Tom's ready to.
I used to do it all the time.
Right.
Well, well, listen, I, you know what, I, in all seriousness, you know, I think that, you know, I need authorization to spend my time on it. I think to to do it as a group with Canaan and Tom would be helpful because I think that you guys, you know, would would add to the exercise. I also think, you know, doing the parking count with the existing commercial is important. Um, I think these are two very good ideas to kind of get to the next level. Um, and to do that, I I will tell you, you know, when you put in your memo, you know, to do test fits, you know, none of the, I I don't know that the town board is familiar with what that means, right? And so we have.
We can convert that to a trip to Paris. They'll never know.
Absolutely. I mean, but but we have, you know, are we test fitting existing properties? Are we joining properties to test fit? I mean, so we need to create the parameters within which the test fits are occurring and and kind of run them.
I, what I would, I would, I mean, just, this is just me, but I would shy away from taking North Greeley and doing test fits of other people's property. I think that we ought to do it generically um, without sort of putting it on a map.
Um, is that possible?
To get the information.
Well, you can, you just use a, you use the lot sizes.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
Yeah. You know, we.
The, again, against.
Lot size analysis for the hamlet.
Yeah.
Does Sabrina, do you see, like, do you see this being useful?
Of course I see it being useful.
No, no, briefly, please be honest, because.
I am, I am being honest, I am being honest. Because I think it points to what suspect to be true in regards to allowing new development to occur in the hamlet, right? I mean, a hard decision. How tall will you go?
Right.
That's the real decision. And if there's a way to keep it at three stories, then I think then there's a no brainer here. And and I think if there isn't, we also need to know that.
Well, it all depends on, it sort of depends on what your target is. And that sort of gets to, well, how many, nowhere in the in the comprehensive uh, plan that I remember or in the form based code necessarily, the, um, sorry, the E I S of the form based code where they did sort of maximum development, how much could you do? Was there really a target policy number of how many units?
No.
No, there was not.
Right. And so um, I think that when, I actually think when it comes to residential, um, certain limits like height being a key factor, I actually think that more is more, right? I don't feel that way about retail, but I feel that way myself personally about residential. So the more is more would be, let's do three stories and let's do four stories if we can get four stories. And then, you know, have that as a tool for the town board to be able to make your assessment about whether four stories is worth it or not, or.
Well, I I still, um, I mean, I I, you know, at some point, I, what I'm hoping is that this information will lead us to a recommendation for the town board to consider different zoning, a different district for the North Greeley so that retail is not mandatory. Optional, but unmandatory. I I really think that's going all the way out of North Greeley and mandating that it has to be, you know, in future development, it has to be retail. Um, that's gotta, that's gotta make developers really think twice. And of course, it has all kinds of ramifications in terms of, you know, um, height uh, to to meet other objectives. And then, you know, you're running into uh, all different kinds of secondary and primary resistance and other issues.
And again, I, and I'm sorry, go ahead, El Dad.
Well, just to, to, you know, to your point, Bob, I mean, it's all, as we've said, it's all part of a kind of a a rich industry. Um, that nothing is 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 in a vacuum. Um, and I just want to, and I appreciate the work on on the memo, but uh, um, and and I I believe it, it does mention this, but we talked about the idea that it doesn't all have to be uh, black or white, like yes or no, right? For all of North Greeley, um, the intersection makes more sense, deeper out makes less sense for for more compulsory uh, retail. And so, so we can work on this and 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 we sort of have a a blank canvas. And what, you know, we talked about it when we had our in-person meeting. Um, and and about how this is a, we have a great opportunity in front of us here. And and the North Greeley uh, piece of this is big enough to be interesting, but not too big that it's unwieldy. Um, where we can talk about test fits and really be able to um, be specific without, I I think it's fine to not talk about specific private, you know, land of other people's property, but just conceptually, so we can understand what, what. You know, land of other people's property, but just conceptually, so we can understand what, what makes sense. And so um. I guess, and 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 Conan's question to Sabrina is, would this be helpful? The answer was yes. And so, um, how do we advance this?
Well, you know, I, I think I have, I, listen, I'm going to take some liberty here and say, if there are two of you who want to work with me to kind of sketch out a test fit. Right? Then I say, you know, open up your schedules and let's see if we can pick a date. If more than two, then that's a meeting. Um and we need to set a a public meeting to do that. Um, you, you know, it, it, there's nothing wrong with sitting down for an hour. To kind of sketch some things out and figure out what we need, what we don't need. You, do you know what I'm saying? I don't think we need the town board permission to do that. I think spending my time doing a parking study is a little bit different. Um, you know, and I would want to make sure that I have the the liberty to do the parking study. Um, but I think that I can afford a meeting, you know, um. Once a week or twice a week for an hour to kind of hash this out with two of you.
Yeah, I, I think that Kanon, uh I'm, I'm happy to do it. I actually already did one um. Couple of years ago, uh which I'll share with you, Kanon. I think other people have seen it, but.
Okay.
I'll share that with you. Um and that was based on really assembling all the lots, pretty much all the lots on the east side of the street.
But we don't want to do that, do we?
No.
Wait a minute. This is, I know, you're right. We don't want to do it on North Greeley. We want to do.
We, we, we didn't want to assemble lots.
We're not gonna.
I.
We're gonna show, uh, this is what I think it ought to be. Kanon, tell me if you agree. We ought to do like a standard lot, which is. You know, I don't know what the acreages are there. It's these quarter acre lots down there, whatever they are. A standard generic lot, which is a quarter acre, one which is half acre, whatever sort of addresses the essential sort of pattern of. Generic, right? And one, two, three, assemble, four, assemble. And that, you know, I I can take, I think for it to be useful, for us to get together for that meeting to be useful, we have to have something that we can share and look at. Rather than just talk over.
So what I would like to do, I have a lot size analysis of the existing lots in the hamlet. I can narrow that down if you guys want to North Greeley.
What's a lot size analysis mean?
It goes through all of the lots that currently exist today and what size they are.
Well, yeah, I have that. It's on the G P, it's on the town G P S, right? Mapping.
Yeah, I have it in a table. Um. You, you know, because I think, you know, one of the difficulties in the hamlet is that we have very shallow lots.
Right.
It's not a, it's not a typical quarter acre lot where you have. You know, depth.
Right, they're, they're ninety two, two hundred and ten feet deep, somewhere in that range.
Yeah, so, so we have to be mindful of that.
Oh, I know that.
Well, I think that would be, I think it would be great if, if Kanon and Tom, you know, if you guys can schedule us and do this, I I think. Uh Sabrina's suggestion that we do this with only two members, so we don't have to have a formal meeting, makes good sense. Um and if you guys can do this, that I think would be just terrific. Just terrific. And then what I'll do is we'll also send a memo to the town board and ask for. Uh authorization to conduct the uh parking analysis, uh current parking analysis. Is that correct, Sabrina?
Well, what I would like to do is let me have a, have a conversation with my administrator, with Jill. And see if it's necessary to send it to the town board or it's something that is part of.
Good.
The, the idea here would be just to come up with three, four different scenarios. So one lot, two lots, four lots. And then see what is it that we can fit there? How many cars? How many units? You know, just sort of like how many stories would make sense? And just come up with three, four different scenarios without ever saying which lot, which role, which anything.
Right, right.
Right. And and I think we need to just make sure that we um. We kind of have our parameters, right? Um so that it's clear, right? That we're not looking at, you know, a a lot that's too football fields. That we're really looking at the characteristic of what we have in.
So that we average, yep.
Well, I would, right.
I would think that you might give more emphasis, might give more emphasis to the west side. Because the, the blocks of land are easier to work with. And and as a byline, Horace would be happy with that.
Well, I think the west side solves itself because there's so much land. I think the challenge is on the east side where.
That's true. But if we practice, if you, if you practice on the west side first, you may have some ideas that are workable in, over the course of time.
Well, they may require different solutions, right?
Exactly, exactly.
I have a scheme for the west side also, so.
So Kanon and Tom, do you want me to send you kind of a a time? Do you want to tell me what's, what's good for you? How do you want to do that?
I, I can send you some dates. Okay, I can do it now or I can send it to you by email.
I, I think by email is probably best and if you.
Okay.
Tom is.
Yeah.
All three of us will be connected.
Well, I just would like to say that, that I think we need to do the studies first before we get together. We ought to have something to look at. So.
As a board again?
No, just the two of us.
Oh, okay, okay.
With Sabrina's help.
Yeah.
Uh but I think that, at least I would rather, I would like to start by doing some real.
With having something.
And then share it and then have a meeting uh on that.
Okay.
All right. So, so Tom, I would like you and Kanon to have the same information.
Yeah, what, what in, yeah, okay. Send us what you think we ought to be sharing. I, I think it's all in G P S to just get a feeling for how big the prototypical lot should be, but if you want to help us out.
Listen, Kanon, do you feel that you have enough resources to?
No.
Yeah, so.
I'm.
Yes.
Um, I would, I would prefer to have what you have. Um and I'm also, yeah. Uh I, I could, I, in that email, we could, what we could do is just sort of. Do some, do the first round of sketches and then meet up and then maybe we can. Sort of think about how to um. How, you know, discuss that and see if we can come up with three or four solutions that we can bring in, in front of this group after.
Right.
Okay.
I agree.
Could you guys, do you think you guys will be able to meet uh over the next two weeks so that, you know, we'll have something from you for the next meeting? So we can continue our conversation?
I think I can do that.
Good, that would be very, that would be great if we could. Um again, you know, it's very good that we're doing it with just two members. We don't have to name names and name plots, so we don't. Start getting letters to me, why are you subdividing my property without authorization, uh all that's kind of fun things. So again, we have to keep this very.
It's, it will be super generic.
Okay.
Yes. Great.
Okay, good, great. All right, I think we're at the point where we just need this information to really have a meaningful conversation. So uh we'll just continue it next time. And, yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but um. I think that we, at some point, and maybe it could be now, uh ought to have a conversation about um affordability. Uh it doesn't have to be a long one. I think that, uh but I know that Kanon and Eldad have uh pretty strong feelings about that. And um if the affordability uh uh. Policy to get as much as we can reasonably get uh is tied to. The amount of housing we can get. What should be the appropriate affordability targets, not in terms of numbers of units, but ratios? And I know that there's already uh the, the, the ten percent, is it?
Yes, now required.
Uh do we want to recommend that it be more? I know we started the conversation about this back when we were looking at the form based code. Uh is this the time to bring that up again? Um do you two guys want to uh talk about that or you want to push the envelope a little bit? For North Greeley? Does that something that we ought to be looking at?
I, my sense is. You can do it with ten percent and then leave it open. Um if it, you know, we, that we considerate, we would consider it. Consider, I'm sorry, consider other options that came, came in in the future and the number can be changed. So I think ten percent is easy. Uh it's memorable. It's easy to use mathematically. Uh so. That's what I would do. For the moment, later on, we'll see.
Yeah.
And, El Dan.
Well, I mean, I don't know, just because.
Do you want to go first?
Mathematically is, is.
I agree. I totally.
But um. I would, can we? Well, I, I have things to say about it, but I also wonder if maybe we should uh punt on it and and have a discussion. Not just tacked on to this conversation, but have it another time. Um. But, you know, ten percent is a number. Um and and uh I would love to figure out how to successfully maximize affordable housing. In our town, uh that's kind of the goal, not a number, not eight percent and not twenty five percent. Um because, you know, if we say a hundred percent, it's not going to happen, right? So that's, that's zero percent, right? And so. What is, what is a a realistic number? And I guess it's also a question of, like we talked about values before with, you know, identifying parking. Uh policy that identifies values and and talking about affordable housing goals identifies values, you know, I mean, and. If your north star is maximizing affordable housing, then that's great. That's certainly part of. What will drive me in this kind of conversation. However, I go back to my earlier point, maybe we should have, I feel like this is opening up a whole big. Topic at quarter to nine that maybe we don't want to go down. I don't know.
I, I would tend to agree with that. Frankly.
I would.
Another big issue and I, and, and again, it's, it's very much policy driven. Um we're working, you know, on the planning sort of to get to policy resolutions rather than coming out with, I believe, policy dicta. Indicating that we're recommending twenty percent, ten percent, fifteen percent or whatever. I mean, I've spoken many times. Um. I am, I am for diversity of housing in the true sense of diversity of housing. And I remain um adamant that I want to see workforce housing. I want to see senior housing. I want to see a, a mix of housing. Market as well as ownership as well as rental. And I think that's how you get vibrancy when, when you have that kind of mix. So I, you know, I don't know what the number is. I don't know what works in all of those areas. You just divide it by, you know, five different topics, so twenty percent of each. Maybe that's, maybe that's it. But um I, I believe those things have got to be addressed.
I also agree that we should talk about this on another day, Tom, just because it's such, such an important conversation. The second is. The more housing we build, the more we affect affordability outside of the affordable and. Keep saying this, that afford is, is actually a financial construct as far as. Building affordable housing in the U S is concerned. So we have to sort of really differentiate what we are calling affordable housing versus workforce versus senior. And I totally agree that if, at the end of the day, it is contributing to more housing. So we really should be talking about how many units we are building first, then really talk about this sort of. Affordability that is controlled by the financial construct of how it's being built. Um and, and in the city, like different cities have different measures and then we can sort of go in. And again, if it wants to be a very data driven conversation, we really need to look at. Typically, what is the area's median income? What are the variations in people's incomes in this town? And accordingly, what is the? What are we comfortable? We, you know, what, what, is it, you know, not just the number of units, but it's really about. The affordability factor for each of those. And that's really not in our hands. It's really going to be to the. Hands of the developer going to come in and say, I, I will get X amount of funding from the state and so I will have to put in. Twenty percent or forty percent affordable housing. And that's very different than saying we're going to build a thousand units, uh or we're going to build five hundred units or we're going to build three hundred units. So, uh and whether they're workforce or. Rental or market rate or different types of housing. I feel like that is definitely the first conversation, the total number of housing, the type of housing. And then we should talk about, um, you know, how much of this can be mandated and why? Because if we cannot mandate this with backing with any kind of. Data, then we are going to hit, you know, we're again going to come to the same sort of conversation which leads to, you know. Well, that's a very N B idea. Well, that's not a N B idea. And, you know, and then it just doesn't go anywhere. My two thoughts again.
I'm not quite sure where we ended up on that, uh whether you thought that it was a futile exercise, going to be a futile exercise or not. But uh, see, now we're starting to talk about what we had already decided we're not going to talk about until next time.
Right.
So uh.
We should talk about it next time. Sorry.
No, no, that's okay. No, I, I want to talk about it now, but uh I didn't know it was going to end up being potentially another two hours. I thought it'd be.
Yes.
So I guess I was wrong.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's something we need to punt on tonight because I think it is a lengthy conversation.
Okay. Very good.
So we'll, we'll continue it and we have a couple of minutes. There's always minutes to uh to resolve here. So we have the minutes of uh January eighteen. Fish, I had a question on line uh fifty four of page two.
All right, let me grab that.
Please see video for minimal changes. Is there supposed to be a different word than video?
Uh.
Is that a note to yourself perhaps?
No, I actually put that in there because like we just made a, but they were like just minimal changes. I didn't want to list everything.
Maybe you could say, um, please see video of the meeting or um recording of the meeting or something like that to indicate. The meeting video that you're referring to.
Okay, got it.
By the way, the things we talked about on page three, uh do we have any more information? Sabrina, you were going to look into some flag lot language. Uh that we might have or language that we might come up with uh for the town board to consider?
Um, I haven't done that. Um I thought, I thought that, that the language in the, we talked about the languages in the existing code regarding lot depth.
Yeah, I was just looking here. It said, that you're, you would work on the flag lot language and draft application. And checklist for requirements consistent with the proposed legislation. And we don't see that much of it, but um that was one thing we had talked about, I guess.
I can look into that.
And Jennifer, on page five, uh it's, it's in the minutes, but I, um. Were you able to check to see whether or not this is something had to be ratified by the town board? I think this was the computers. This goes to line twelve on page five of those minutes.
I will double check. I think we did look into that and the answer was no, but I'll double check my notes to be sure.
I thought that was the case, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone, any changes, thoughts on the minutes?
Other than. Alicia, did you make a change?
I got your, uh, your change, yes.
Okay, and that'll be taken care of. Good.
Mm hmm.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, is there a motion then to adopt the minutes of January eighteen?
A move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ayes.
And we have the minutes of uh February one. Any changes, thoughts? And one little minor thing, I'll just, I'll just email it to you, approach you afterwards. They have it. If not, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of February one? As amended?
Bye.
Don't leave yet.
Well, we, we were having a good time. Why leave?
I'll take that as a motion, Dick. Very good. Thanks. Is there a second?
My pleasure.
Oh, okay. All in favor?
Yes, aye.
Great, terrific. Um, all right, we're all set. Um so we, we will meet again in a couple of weeks and this is, I think, when do we meet next? May third?
May third.
Okay. So, uh, okay, no extra week this time. Okay, so we'll meet May third. Uh again, thanks very much, Kanon and Tom for uh working with Sabrina on this. It's very good. I think it'll be very helpful. Anyway, uh, we're all set. Is there a motion closing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? All right, motion's carried. One zip. Very good. All right, thanks so much. Here.